...aging adults and exercising in the water is just a wonderful opportunity for them to be able to stay fit and improve their health. And I've seen that happen for years and years. And there's some ladies in the background that can advocate for that better than I can, because they've been members of the program for a long time. The other thing that I wanted to address was the elementary swim program. We've been very lucky. For several years, we had a swim program that all four elementary schools participated in, children ages first grade to fifth grade. It was actually started by Anna Wagner, who's sitting in the back of the room here as a water safety instructor. We taught about 700 children per year to swim. And it was just wonderful. And I saw a lot of changes in the abilities of those children. And I have some wonderful stories I could tell you about how much they improved and how much it impacted their lives and impacted head on mind. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Becky Fritz. I live at 91990 Street. And this is my daughter, Emma Fritz. She is now a sophomore at the high school, but did her first year of swim this year after doing multiple years with Craig Sea Sharks since first grade. First grade, I believe. As a mother, it's very worrying when your child is driving 45 minutes in a snowstorm each way to swim. When the pool is here, it's very beneficial. I am now the secretary at an elementary school, and I see the difference between our older kids that had access to the swim program and our younger ones now that don't. I also, I've had two girls graduate from Moffitt County High School, and I have a third grade boy. He plays basketball. He's not into swimming. So the late night basketball practices when he was this first grader are very difficult on our elementary kids. We want them to be a part of these activities, but we're expecting them to stay out until eight o'clock, nine o'clock with practices. As a secretary, I see AAU, I see Parks and Rec trying to schedule gym time before another group, because there's so few opportunities and locations for them to schedule for basketball or wrestling or any of those options, because at the high school, the high school teams always come first. But you know what? Bar C always comes before JV. And where is JV going to practice? They're going to practice eight o'clock at night, because we have one gym for them to use. My daughter and many other girls did weight training with the football team, because we had one weight room. Not saying anything against the high school, but more opportunities for our ball would be very helpful for our student athletes that we value highly in this area. Just in case you weren't sure, I have in favor of this. I have one response, though. Definition of a mob is a large crowd of people, especially one that is disorderly and intend on causing trouble or violence. I have been in on the ground floor of this rec group, and I have never seen a group work harder for something to benefit all rather than a narrow view of a few. What you're showing our youth
Twenty seconds.
is that if you work hard for three and a half years, don't be expected to even graduate. This group has worked hard. Give them the opportunity to be on the ballot. Thank you.
Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tracy Wall, and my address is 858 Exmore Road. Obviously, there's a lot of controversy about this, and I don't know that I've realized that before I came tonight or read the comments. And so I know that this is touching for a lot of people. And I don't know that anything I'm going to say is necessarily going to change their mind. But I also have seen this group work really hard for this. Does Craig, will Craig survive without a rec center? Yeah, I think Craig will survive without a rec center. But I think that Craig could thrive in a different way if we were allowed to put this forward. I want to speak with two hats. So I'm a medical provider in town, and there are many times that I have recommended different types of exercise for patients that couldn't do things that weren't in the water. They needed water because of their joints, because of whatever medical condition. And to only have that opportunity in the summer was detrimental to their health. They didn't have the opportunities to drive other places to get that done. And I think that it's really important for their mental health as well of patients that I saw. You know, there's not, there are opportunities for exercise in the winter here in Craig, but they're limited. And you all know how cold it gets, and some of those things are not, some people aren't able to do. And there are many, many studies that show that exercise benefits mental health. And so we saw, and I see as a medical provider, in the winter, mental health decreases significantly. I think that a rec center could help improve that significantly. I know that not everybody in this room would necessarily use it, but I think that the benefits would benefit everybody, even if you don't use it, because the mental health and the health of this community could increase in times that we see it decrease during the winter times. And as a second hat, as a resident and as a mother, I really think that a rec center would be an amazing addition to this community. We moved back here, my husband and I, after living away for a few years, because we wanted to live and play in the same place. We knew that if we lived here, there's many opportunities. We do get out in the winter. We like to do that. But we also find ourselves traveling to different places outside of Moffitt County, so that our kids can do things, swim and things like that. And so I really think that even if you are not using it, that it could benefit the community as a whole due to mental health and providing opportunities for the community and our children.
So I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but as I hear people talk about my future here in Craig, Colorado, I can't stand still. See, I don't have a pool that I can go to in the winter, and I don't have a gym that I can easily access as a 15-year-old girl. There's a lot more I want to say, but I think the people who have spoke before me about a rec center have done a better job than I can. I just want to ask you a question, and that question is, what about the next generation of kids who've come here?
Anyone else who wants to testify?
Tom Kramer, 855 Randy. I too was not going to speak tonight. Some of the people that are helping bring this on are here to my heart, and I love you guys. But I am opposed. Will Craig survive without a rec center? If it will, will some of the businesses that it's going to put out business, will they survive? Will I survive? My business pays a huge amount of taxes, and my life has changed dramatically in the last three months, and money is now basing to me. I don't think with COVID and the downturn, I don't think I can survive this. We are at risk of putting people out of business. There are many places, except for a pool, that you can go get these same things right now. You can tell I'm not the most fit person, but I can go find it if I choose, except for the pool. And we paid a lot of money for the pool, the wave pool and the high school. We've already put a lot of money in. I feel for Emma. Every year that the girls come to me, and I donate voluntarily. This is theft from me. I believe this is theft. It's not right. And yet, I love some of these guys. At least, helped save my dad's life. It's hard for me to appear in a loser. Candy, I love you. Becky, I love you. But this is wrong. This could be fun privately if it's that need. So thank you for letting me have my two seconds.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Gina Robison, 403 Hill Drive, Craig, Colorado. I wasn't going to talk either. I didn't even know about this until somebody told me today. I got a notice about the rec center, but I never got any notices about public meetings. I don't do the paper. I'm retired. I'm out in Western Nobles, so I don't have access to what's happening here in Craig, because advertising or telling people about things is not fair. This community is so far back in doing that, in events and so forth. Unless you read the paper or have somebody tell you, you're not going to know about it. I am totally opposed against this. I am not going to use it. And now all I'm hearing is about swimming. What happened to the Shadow Mountain Pool? Why didn't we get that high school pool fixed instead of building a whole new rec center? There's plenty of outdoor opportunities here outside of Craig. See a large basin. Duffy Mountain, there's a bunch of places, Cerro Grillo. What happened to the school programs that used to take kids out camping? We're not, you know, we need to get back to that, have kids go outdoors again. Instead of spending this money on a rec center, donate it to the school so they get those kids back outdoors. That's what we need. We need to get these kids back to nature, not in some building doing something. Go down to the river and swim. You're outdoors. Yeah, wintertime, cross-country skiing. Enjoy the outdoors. Yeah, I don't have else to say. You know, who's going to pay, like this young lady was saying over here, who's going to pay for the facilities? Who's going to pay for the employees? Upgrade that. A power plant going out? I don't have money to use this facility. I don't even want to use it. I'd rather be outdoors. You've got to think of things like that. You know, why don't we add a pool onto the Boys and Girls Club? Let's do that. Why spend the money on a whole new place when we have all these empty buildings? Why don't we refurbish those and use those buildings? Instead of building another building that's probably going to end up abandoned, because no one's going to be here to use it or can't afford to use it? So we need to think about things like that before we spend money on a rec center and tax me when I'm retired and everything is going up. I've got to survive. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Leela Anderson, and I live at 883 Mulley. I just wanted to speak on the kids. I have three kids who are, they have a lot of therapies that I have to take them to, and a pool would be wonderful for them, for them to be able to go and exercise that way. I know that, I supported that education program with the pool when students were going. And I don't know how many of you realize, how many of these kids have never been in water? I would go and volunteer, and I would say a good third of the students in my elementary school that my kids went to had never been in water before. They didn't know how to swim. They couldn't go to the river because they would probably drown. They had never been in water past their knees. And we taught them fundamental skills on how to swim. We taught them how to float, so that if they ever fell in water, they would hopefully float long enough to sink above water before they drown. I think that it was criminal that we lost our pool at the high school, and I think that we need to push forward and have a rec center so that our kids, where we are surrounded by water, have the opportunity to learn how to swim. That's all.
I'm not prepared to say anything really. My name is Mark Ball. My address is 59 Steel Street. If there's a real desire to have a pool here, I can say that you should be able to monitor. You should have a private company that should be able to make money in order to actually provide for this. If a private company has not been able to do this, then it's obvious that it's not going to survive on its own. Otherwise, it would give up here already. That's a kind of whatever as far as a rec center. You have a nice number of rec center here, but I don't know. My taxes going up. So that's one of the reasons I like this community is it's very inexpensive to live. If you guys want something expensive to live and you want all of the amenities, that would be a great place for that. And good luck with owning a home down there. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jerry Arnold. My address is 390893. I hear everybody talk about this. I do not want to point taxes to law, but I also have some issues here. Everybody keeps talking about this pool. I offer a fact word for the high school. I know how much it was costing the high school for that pool to be in operation. And that is exactly what happened to Shadow Mountain. And I'm sorry, but it's going to happen here. It costs a lot of money to maintain a pool. It's not free. So maybe I'll look into what the taxes are going to be, or what it's going to cost to maintain that pool. Because that's why the other two went out. Why don't we just cover the one we got? Maybe that's an option, if it's just the swimming that we need. I agree with recreation. I mean, I agree with the lady, we need to get our kids outside, not inside. So, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Come on up here and sit in front row and repeat the thanks, first.
Thank you. My name is Johnny Ford, 2284 Jeff boat driver. Not the most eloquent speaker, but I felt it was important that I came up here and spoke on behalf of the kids that I teach. So I know a lot of you in this room. I taught a lot of the kids in this room, and I keep hearing about this swim program. I can't tell you what a detriment it was when that went away. Three years have passed, I think, since they built the high school pool. I still have students ask me every year, so are we going to swim this year? Or, it's vital to them. It's a life-saving skill. It's not just we go up and play in the water. Okay? Or we teach them how to float. We teach them the confidence of basic swimming strokes. We teach them the value of exercise and finding an exercise that works for you. So just as a P E teacher, I can tell you how vital it is for me and for the students that I serve, that we have some place for them to restart this program again. Thank you.
Yeah, here's 27th Ground, right? I'm against the rest of the rec center. We use off the tiny property owners having the potential to act, trying to nail a success on our property in one year. This going against the street is not a vote again for the lack of pride in Moffitt County. Exactly the opposite. I'm proud of Moffitt County does this, including assessing explicitly. Responsible thing for its residents. I'm proud we're able to support local businesses that support families without taking taxpayers such as local jam and instill. I'm proud it has a local hotel that lets locals swim indoors in the winter to help solve the problem without local tax laws. You see, I have a problem with refrigeration. But when we use my hard-earned tax knowledge to do something that's only a wrong and not a need, that is unmaking progress. We see urbanism cause local property to have this on.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Randy. Randy Stevens, 73, Steel Street. I'm against this proposition. There's plenty of buildings in this town that are empty, and they can go set up a track in or wherever they want to exercise. I all for kids getting exercise and having fun. But when I grew up, we didn't have any pools in junior high. We didn't have any in high school. And I survived. I don't know how. I really don't know. But you really can't survive without a pool. But if you want to run this town, don't make taxpayers pay for it. You know, open up one of these buildings, sink a pool, and it's not going to last anyway, because there's no quality control or surveillance in this area. And nobody overrides a contractor. Someone's just going to fail anyway. Look at the sidewalks in this town. It's a joke. Anyway, I'm not for this proposal. And I'm sorry these people spent three years on one of those. They should have more than one. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Lois Weimler. My residence is 1239 Legion. We own 2050 County Road 20 as well. What I have to say is what I've heard tonight is there's a lot of fear here about what's going on. Fear is the dark room where negatives are developed. If we really want this, if we really need this, there's a way to do it. I think it can happen. Am I crazy about jacking up my taxes 10% almost? No, I'm not. But I've lived here for 45 years. They built the wave pool. I didn't understand that. We never marketed the wave pool. It's 39 years old. Things wear out. It's kind of like the old hospital wore out. It goes back to, we can live without it. Yes, of course we can. But we will thrive with it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? State your right of, state your name and address for the record,
My name is Marlon Suminone. I live at 6791 County Road 7. And yes, I pay taxes. Good evening, B O C C members that are still looking. My name is Enne. Yeah. I heard testimony on June 8th pertaining to the proposed rec district for Moffitt County. Many statements were made pro and con. Some statements were true and many were without merit. I felt a positive outcome in general was achieved. I did hear a statement that there was three out of four that was a negative proponent that they were against it. I was there. I felt that it was about half and half. A lot of people wanted it, but they didn't want to pay the taxes. The other people were opposed to it. Okay. A statement as to the negative success of the Delta County Recreation District was made, and I would like to address this issue as I'm a homeowner as well in Delta County. My husband worked in the mines there. We were there through the upturn and the downturn. We were there when the mines were lies, were closed. We had children who lived on a farm. They worked hard. They had their chores. But they needed more. A rec center was proposed, and we were in. We supported every effort to promote the center. Yes, we knew we were going to pay taxes. Our experience was more than positive. We enjoyed our rec center almost daily. It took four years for it to be instituted. I actually rode the hay wagon from the old Cleveland Pool when they dumped a load of gravel in it. And we went down to build pedals, and we got off of the hay wagon. We went inside to enjoy our new rec center. I called, I did a little bit of research on this, and I spoke with Glenn Black, who was the city manager and the county development director for Delta. I did my research with suggestions from him on financial statements and on M costs. All are public records. You can check them out online. I'm not going to bore you with them. I called the lieutenant governor's office, and they directed me to the right people to talk to. Delta is second to the state for administrative excellence and positive Over the last 13 years, they have struggled and they have survived. They celebrated 25 years in 2018 and paid off a bond of five years early in spite of the economic downturn. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I support it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to testify?
The acoustics in this place is awful. Can you hear me if I speak like this?
No.
Okay, I'll use this.
All right, Paul. State your name and your address for the record.
My name is, my name is Holly Percy. I live at 35971 North Highway 13. I'd like to call, excuse me, I'd like to call a couple things from the service plan. The purpose of the Recreation District, and I quote, "is to finance, construct, and operate a recreation and aquatic center." I think that's why everybody's here tonight. But have you read the rest of what they say? "And to acquire, develop, and manage other recreation facilities and programs within the district." I can't support any kind of program or district where they tell us what they want to do with the recreation center. But so far, I haven't heard any of them come forward with what are their plans in the future? Are they going to take over all of the city parks, Loudly Simpson, and whatnot? Why aren't they telling us the whole program? Quoting again, "The purpose of the Recreation District is to provide opportunities for the community to participate in year-round recreation in sports, swimming, health," I can't even read the whole writing, "and fitness and other activities and programs such as day camps for the children, sports swimming, swimming lessons, and dance classes." When I look at this, I have two questions in mind. First, I'm talking my feelings about the rec district. But I have two questions that I think we need to consider. Number one, do we need this recreation center? Yes or no? And number two, can we afford this recreation center? And again, yes or no? Whether you are for, against, or undecided concerning the recreation center, I would strongly recommend that you look at two different pamphlets or information sheets. Number one, if you have not ever received this
Twenty seconds.
Is that right? You need to look at this. Everything, the majority of things that they're proposing in this Recreation District are already Everything, the majority of things that they're proposing in this Recreation District are already available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to testify? Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Misty Jones, and I live on 3 Barkley Street. And I'm coming up here Tuesday, and I'm proud for this. I'm not gonna restate what many people already said tonight, because I think a lot of the things that I came up here to say and read a letter from my daughter who's on the high school swim team and also learned how to swim in the elementary school form, I'm not going to go through everything again. But I have been here as a resident and a teacher here off Penn State for 25 years, and I've paid taxes for 25 years, and my husband is a local business owner, and he also pays taxes. And we are in support of this because not only activities as we are getting older, but also for our family members who already live here who are needing extra services and extra places where they can go and get activities year-round and not just rely on the limited. We do have indoor gyms that they can go to, but asking somebody who's 60, 70, 80 years old to be able to go to a local gym and be able to do healthy workouts and be able to make their personal health better is a lot to ask for them to feel comfortable to do that. So we are in support of this, even if it does raise our taxes in our home and our business. It's still something I think would better the community for people who are looking to move here. Our enrollment in Moffett County School District has been declining, and if we want families to move to Craig, we need to be able to offer them services for things that they could get somewhere else. But why wouldn't they choose to go somewhere else? Why shouldn't they choose to come to Moffett County? Why don't they want to come to Craig and live? But if we can offer them services that would make them feel like they want to be here, then that just won. So we are in support of it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to testify? Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
I get really nervous talking to people. My name is Arkin, and I live at 1932 West Third Street. I am very in support of the rec center and the rec district. I have worked with this group for two years now. Their work is relentless. I mean, they work effortlessly to try to get this done. I will admit, this Colorado law involving this inclusion process is very confusing. I think it puts all of you in really bad situations, because you're property owners as well. I think we should allow us to go to vote. People, I don't really think, sometimes don't understand, the citizens have the right to vote on this. And then if it is voted on where everybody says, we want this rec center,